Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to start our joint public hearing right now. The notice of joint public hearing, notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, June 13th, 2023, at 7:15 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building for the town of Tassau, located 211 Central Avenue, Tassau, Virginia 24651, the Town and Tassau Planning Commission, the Town Council will hold a joint public hearing pursuant to Virginia Code 15.2-2204, Town Charter Section 3 through 8, and Town Code Section 23-101.2, provide the citizens of the town an opportunity to be heard with respect to an application for a special extension permit Airbnb for properties identified by template number 094, Alpha 2040013, located at 999 Riverside Drive, North Tassau, Virginia 24630, situated in a R2 residential general zoning district. A copy of the special extension permit application is available for review and inspection during the normal business hours, 8:00 AM through 4:30 PM at the Town and Tassau Municipal Building as referenced here in the above. So do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak about this Airbnb? If so, please come up, state your name, address.
Mrs. Markie, go ahead and tell us about it.
Uh, return to the house now. My husband and I used to own that home and live out of the abdomen, but when my husband passed away, my children said that I was getting very tired and I was concerned about him doing so much for her. And I sold them, but the person, I don't know, moved off to live where it's calm, it's right there in my, you know, close to my yard. And they're wanting to turn it into a vet and rent it. And I was just concerned now, you know, the security guard, you know. I know when we rented the people, we kind of checked them out before, you know, they moved in, because we kind of want to check, I know it was good. And I was just concerned about this, you know, things like that.
I think we have, uh, our police, police team can probably speak better than I can, but we have the, we have the police officers available.
Do you have an application yet, Chris?
For what she's talking about? Yeah, I was about two months ago.
You bought the house.
Mommy Simmons, they're seven years.
She's right here.
Okay.
Y'all bought the house.
Is there any other public comment?
She's, she's concerned about who might be in there. It's, it's in her yard. About the people that rent it, people that rent it out, is that it?
Yeah, they have different systems. I was involved in the home. My husband and I used to own it. I also moved in some of that. I only know that some things like that, but I wish to ask the question about when different people come in, you're the person that rents it, know that, you know, paid the rent to, and that's all I can tell you.
I don't know that anybody can guarantee that, but hopefully they will.
See, if you can, you can catch up with Mrs. Markie.
Yeah.
Any concerns that you have, any concern you have, there's somebody in there, you can address them to us and we'll try to work with you. Okay?
Well, I don't know who owns that now, so.
She's here, Simmons is here.
Miss Simmons, right there.
There's Miss Simmons down on the back.
This lady right here is red.
I'm going to live because I was purely involved. That was what was concerning me.
I guess what she's asking, do you have any problems with any of the Airbnbs in town?
No, no, yeah. We've got several in town, and I don't know if we ever have received other than, we've never received files on them anyhow.
Okay, well, I'm happy.
Good. Well, thank you. We're glad you're happy?
I'm happy, though. I don't give a shit. She's got on the ugly sweater.
Is there any other public comment before we close out? Okay, so we're going to close the public hearing and we'll resume the regular town council meeting on Saturday. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out for this town council meeting. It's got a lot of special recognition going on. So if you could, if you would stand and with the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious account heaven, we follow thee again. Thank you for a wonderful day. We thank you for the opportunity we have to gather. We thank you for our freedom. We thank you for the blessings that you blindly bestow on us each and every day that we take away. Lord, we ask that you'll be over this government body tonight, give them the courage and the wisdom to make the decisions that are not only in the best interest of this town, but are also in your son's name. And Lord, we ask that you will be with these girls that are here tonight as we celebrate this incredible victory that they have. Lord, we ask that you will bless and guide them in their next day of life. Lord, we ask that you'll give everybody safe travels home tonight. And again, bless this council in your son's name in prayer. Amen.
All right, first up is our special presentation request. We've got the Tassau High School Girls Softball State Champions. So I'm going to read a resolution of honor, and as I call each of your names, if you could come up and grab a, a frame with the resolution in it and a towel, except for the last person, I have your resolution. I need you to want to read. The resolution of honor, whereas the 2023 Tassau High School Girls Softball Team of Tassau, Virginia, experienced an outstanding season with the following players. Alicia Griffith, number one.
All right, Alicia.
Brooke Nunley, number two. Whitney Bowman, number five. Kendall Taylor, number six. Maddie Galispe, number eight. Katie Large, number nine. Paige Bowman, number 10. Hannah Hayes, number 13. Olivia Hayes, number 16. Riley Lowe, number 19. Harley Compton, number 24. Macy Alford, number 28. Haley Reynolds, number 29. And Mallory Whitaker, number 33. And whereas the THS Girls Softball Team led by Coach Tom King, performed with exceptional teamwork and did so with exemplary behavior reflecting on all fans, students, administration, and staff of the Tassau High School Bulldog. And whereas the THS Girls Softball Team had a season record of 24-1, and whereas the Girls THS Girls Softball Team won 2-1 in the quarterfinals against Athomatics, and whereas the THS Girls Softball Team won 5-0 in the semifinals against Page County, and whereas the THS Girls Softball Team brought home the two-way state girls softball champion title with a 5-2 win against James River. Now therefore being resolved, I, Michael L. Hoops, Mayor of the Town of Tassau, Virginia, with the citizens concurring, do hereby commend and congratulate the THS Girls Softball Team for a job well done, and the best wishes for a continued success in the future. Adopted this 13th day of June, 2023. Okay, so we're going to do photos. Do you have your wide lens? Let's give them one more round of applause.
Did you get them, Susan? Are they too wide?
Yeah.
Now, each one of you has a, you're on the docket for two minutes speech.
The requirement is you can't leave and you've got to sit through all this media. which is one of, one of my favorite clients because it shows that people are taking an Just kidding. interest in our town. We've got entrepreneurs that are taking a chance here with new businesses. Thank y'all very much for coming. So as I announce each business, if the owners could come up and give us a little blurb on what, what your business does, then we'll present you with some goodies. So first is B Noodle, Nick and Aaron Keen.
I brought you some goodies.
The three cent, the three cent.
Here's the deal, so there's seven honey cakes in there, but there are only three spoons and three forks, so.
If you sell them in the right spot.
Kind of like Gladiator scene, maybe.
It's such a given, can't, would y'all like me to pick you?
It's not often we receive the goods.
I just made it last night, actually. All right. How y'all doing? My name's Nick Keen. This is my wife, Erin Keen. I know most of you, not all of you. We are opening B Noodle, which grand opening is this Friday. A lot of gifts, well, hopefully all of your sins working on for a better part of almost a year, seems like it, but we're, we're ready to go and we're going to have a variety of noodle dishes, mac and cheese, Alfredo. We've got some Asian, some Thai. Peanut butter pasta is kind of like an Indonesian sauce, a little spice to it. We're going to introduce ramen. I don't know if any of you are familiar with ramen. It's not the cup of noodles at Food Line, but some of you might think, but it's, uh, it's exciting. We're going to, we're going to start slow with that, introduce a couple of dishes of ramen, and then we'll try to build off of it. But we got some things in the working that we're pretty excited about. We want to do some culinary classes for kids up at the restaurant. We're interested in some catering, some private events, and we're going to, we haven't fully finished the schedule, but we're weekends for sure, Sunday. We're trying to decide Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we're not there for sure. But it's, it's been fun, it's been challenging, and I feel like it's going to be rewarding. The town's amazing. You know, we've received the ton of support.
Can you say that one more time?
Yeah. Yeah. Everybody, I mean, every, every agency, every board.
Throw mayor.
Yeah, I mean, the mayor especially.
True.
He calls me every day.
The council's here too.
Emily, you know, Joe, my buddy Hanky from there.
I don't know about you, Dave.
Thanks for inviting us. It's, it's great to be here, and we look forward to serving you, and we're, we're excited. Oh, we got a little 10-year-old. She has no interest in coming. She's playing softball with Granny now. So anyway, that's us, Nick, Aaron, Bay, the Keen.
Thank you very much. Next is Sawyer's Airbnb, Susan Sawyer's.
Well, we had our first guest at our Airbnb, which is up on Pharaoh Street in Buscol Subdivision, and it went with a success. They came all the way from Lawrenceburg, Kentucky, and asked to come back again next year. And they came in for the old-time revival. And so it went real well. We have a three-bedroom, two-bath Airbnb, and I thought I would open another one this year, but when I saw the expense of setting up the first one, I think I'll wait.
I appreciate the pictures that you sent.
Yeah, yes, I sent some pictures, and I just had a blast doing it, and I've already got three other people booked, and I'm looking forward to having more, you know. So I thank y'all for approving it and giving us an opportunity to do it, and I hope it does really well.
This is for you guys. And do we have the attorney letting Susan take our pictures? Next is Wild Breast Hair Lounge, Greta Burton.
I have some cards and a list of new services. Do you miss cuts? They might want to. And I have other, I have more of these that I'll leave on the back table back here for anyone else who is interested. I want to stand over here because I want to talk to the whole room. Hi, I'm Greta Burton. I'm originally from Bristol, but I moved here with my husband Jared, who everybody probably knows. I moved here in 2022. This is his hometown. And a little bit of backstory, we lived in Morgantown for a while, and while we would travel back and forth to Morgantown, people would be like, oh, Greta's coming to town. So I had, I was building a clientele really for the past seven years here. So it's been a new Tassau was going to be a good location, and it was going to have a lot of support. But I told Jared when we were talking about opening the salon, I was like, we're going to do this on down Main Street, on the uptown. So we found a perfect location. We're at 320 Main Street, which is the old Tassau Motor Corps building. To keep a little bit of that history in the building, the inspiration for the name Wild Rose is sitting on the floor. Not right now, but she will be back 65 Mustang. So something to offer, like a really cool, unique experience. But I just wanted to offer that upscale, nice, uptown experience for the people of town, for the people of Tassau, and the people coming through, all the tourists and things. So a little bit about me, I've developed, been developing my talents and my standards for the past 15 years. I worked for nine years with Aveda in Johnson City. And then when we moved up to Morgantown, I transferred over to the Redken System and have been with them ever since. But in addition to creating the salon experience that I wanted to offer, I strive to create professional-friendly environment where everybody can learn about the products they wanted to use, how to keep, bring your hair alive, all that fun stuff. So most importantly, I want you to leave feeling like you're most confident yourself.
You bring cheese, hair.
Man, it all shines. But I was very humbled by the welcome that I had on my grand opening last Friday. So thank you guys for that. That was amazing. Thank you for helping get us open. I'm sure that was not easy task.
You're going to get arrested on the way out here.
Well, thank you very much for coming here.
Thank you for having me.
Starting this business.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, good luck. Next on the agenda is Relief Massage Therapy and Bodywork, Crystal White.
I'm going to follow. Create a, I like that. That was nice. Hi, my name is Crystal White. I just opened Relief Massage Therapy and Bodywork. It's over on Campbell Lane. Sadly, not Main Street, but baby steps, right? I have been massage therapist for almost 20-ish years now. Chiropracted for 14, so I'm taking it out of the chiropractic situation, bringing it out to the open. You know, now I can offer more modalities. I can offer your Swedish, your deep Swedish, your, your more fun massages like Lomi Lomi and Hot Stone Massage. Primarily I'm medical, but I really enjoy the, the frou-frou, the soft, the fun, the good stuff, the feel-good massages. So that is part of what Relief is going to offer. Relief is going to bring pain relief. That is what I do. That is what I provide. But a lot of tourists that come into Tassau, and they would like to have some massages, especially people that come to visit BnBs. We can all work together and.
These are brochures.
Yes, absolutely. And I do have cards, and I'll just, if I can leave some cards somewhere, and it has my name, my number, my website. My website's got all my services, most of my services, 95% of my services. But I'm very happy to be in Tassau. I'm really enjoying this town. This town is pretty much fun. It's hip. It's, you know, the, the people that are riding the back of the dragon, who I have now dubbed the Dragon Riders, I really like, I like enjoy coming to see them out on Main Street when I come to the well to get my coffee. So thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
Can you go over that again? The things that you mentioned, I don't, I never had a back massage or anything.
Oh, well, you know.
They call them different things depending on what you want.
Yeah, there's all kinds of different styles, different modalities. A relaxing would be just a Swedish massage. If you've got a problem, then you have medical massage.
Oh, that's good.
Then that's when, that's when this little tool right here comes out, my elbow. That's when she comes out to say hello.
And our next business recognition is Aspire Wellness and Chiropractic LLC, Dr. Emily Butcher.
Hi, y'all. I'm Dr. Emily Butcher. I grew up here in Tassau. I graduated in 2014 from Tassau High School. I know a good portion of you from working at Dr. Brown's the past few weeks. As he said, I'm a chiropractor. I do human chiropractic with Dr. Brown, the chiropractor first in Tassau, but I have my own business doing animal chiropractic as well. I am certified with the International Veterinary Chiropractic Association to do small animals and large animals. I do mostly dogs and cats in the office, but if you have goats, sheep, horses, cows, whatever, that I could go to the farm or whatever, I'm willing to work with you and see what we can do. I'm in the office with Crystal with Relief, kind of for Parker in crime. You'll, you might see both of us in there if you come visit us. We have, I am not a vet. I'm a chiropractor. I'm only certified to do chiropractic on animals. I will only analyze and adjust them as I see fit for that animal. I'd love to have you come in. If you have an animal that you think might benefit from better movement and improved function, then I would love to see you there. I can leave some cards with you guys, and I also have some cards at Chiropractic First.
I have to say, I've never heard of a camel.
Most people haven't. Honestly, I haven't until I went to school.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My two dogs have already visited a couple times.
Yeah, Dave, Dave has a few animals.
So moving on. Next on the agenda is the approval of amendments from council meeting on May 9, 2023, and work session on May 16, 2023. I get a motion. Got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right. So next, the approval of financial statements and financial reports from May 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of financial statements and financial reports, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. Next is the committee slash conference updates. Councilmember Davis will give us a planning commission committee update.
The planning commission did not meet last Monday, but you all attended our meeting today at the public hearing. So you will solve what went on. So there you go.
So next, we're going to go to our unfinished business portion. First is the second reading and approval of the 2023-2024 budget.
Can I get a second?
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the budget for 2023-2024, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, we got the budget set for the year. Next manager, Dave's going to give us an update on EMS rights granted and applicable.
Okay, we need to laugh with some funding for the rescue squad. It does leave quite a bit to be desired. So one way or the other, in the next couple of years, regardless of the funding, we will be active on that building. But we have not gotten a response back to that application as of yet. So as soon as I hear anything, I'll, I'll keep cancel.
All right, thank you. Next, manager Dale will give us an update on the Maplewood Sidewalk project.
Next on the agenda is the approval of amendments from council meeting on May ninth, twenty-twenty-three and work session on May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. I get a motion. Got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right. So next, the approval of financial statements and financial reports from May twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of financial statements and financial reports, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay. Next is the committee slash conference updates. Councilmember Davis will give us planning commission committee update.
Uh, planning commission did not meet last Monday, but you all attended our meeting today at the public hearing. So, so you will solve what went on. So there you go.
So next, we're going to go to our unfinished business portion versus the second reading of approval of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget.
Can I make a motion in the way? Is that for you?
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the budget for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, we got the budget set for the year. Next manager, Dave's gonna give us an update on EMS rights granted in Platteville.
Okay, um, we need to apply for some funding for the rescue squad. Um, it does leave quite a bit to be desired, so one way or the other, in the next couple of years, regardless of the funding, we will be active on that building, uh, but we have not gotten a response back to that application as of yet. So as soon as I hear anything, I'll, I'll keep cancel up there.
All right, thank you. Next, manager Dale, give us an update on the Maplewood sidewalk project.
Okay, the sidewalk project on Maplewood started just right after Vietnam and it's, uh, it's been an ongoing project for many years and actually the first year we started that project, our objective was try to have it done by the first football game, but it seems like other projects trump that project or priorities or different directions we have to go in, limited staff, et cetera. So, um, the splash pad is our last objective to try to get open by July the first and after learning the weather report for next, the week that it's supposed to have the surface put down. We might just open it without the surface, but it's supposed to rain in a whole week, so we just have to watch the weather and see how to go. Splash pad and I've got a project on Finn Castle. Um, storm water line on Finn Castle. I actually hired out the reseeding of project on fairground that we did last year, so in our agreement with him, the contract third way and we were coming back. So I actually hired it out today. Um, but I'll keep cancel up to date on Maplewood project, but I'm, I'm hoping by mid-July, August, we can be wide open on that project. As long as nothing else jumps in front of, um, as long as a little problem.
Understood. So next is miscellaneous unfinished business. I didn't see any. So we're gonna jump to our new business section. We need to approve amendment to IEDA bylaws. Manager Dave?
All right, you've got a couple of changes that were requested by council. Other ones were just put in here that we talked about earlier in the work session. One of those changes will allow individuals that actually own businesses within our political jurisdiction that may live outside of our political jurisdiction, but in Tasswell County to serve on the IEDA board. And that'll be a, a major plus, uh, in approving that. The other, the other change is for just for purposes of scheduling and timing due to conflict with the planning commission. Uh, bylaws are recommended to have four-thirty meeting time put in there with the understanding they can, do and will meet at other times based on the board that's in power or after time. And that, I believe, Brad, if I'm correct, there are only two?
There are the two changes that are got.
Article four and Article eight, section C.
Okay, uh, so I need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
Uh, manager Dave, on the, uh, removal from the IEDA portion.
Yes.
Uh, when I was reviewing the language on it earlier today, I think I said.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The, uh, just to confirm, language will be added that states if a business owner that's been appointed to the IEDA south moves out in town or moves out of Tasswell County, they will then be removed from the IEDA.
Right.
Yeah, I could put that in there. The only thing I would just add to that is that is, if they're, if they move, they're not qualified, but they no longer have the residency, so they're automatically out. Um, I don't necessarily think you, you would need it. I could put it in.
Just for clarity, I think it could be added, uh, because you do have it, you do have it for the, uh, citizens who live in town. I think it's that language.
I do have, what I say, I do, the way, the prior reading was any person who's qualified to vote for town at Tasswell at the time of his or her appointment and thereafter resides in the town. I think that would put in because people that may move in and get appointed beforehand and they need to reside.
We will absolutely add it.
Okay.
So, uh, all in favor of the proposed changes to the IEDA bylaws, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, so changes are approved. So next is the fruit of low bidder for demolition of the bowling alley. Uh, manager Dave, I understand there's been some discussion about possibly pushing that.
Yeah, there was some recent discussion, and I'm just bringing it to you, but there was some recent discussion about maybe tabling the project. Just to give you an update, um, there is a bid buying on this, on this project. Um, and it is, is a lot of money left on the table. I, I'm personally not familiar um, with other subjects that may be out there. I know some interest parties, but honestly, but there is, there was a lot of money left on the table on this contract. A bunch. Now I can go back to the bidder and ask for some time. Maybe see if they'll hold that price for.
Till June twenty-third?
Yeah.
You want to table this in?
Uh, I would rather table it and kill it. Like I said, I've got a bid bond on it.
Okay.
And it's a lot of money. It was really a good deal. There's a lot of money left on the table.
Now, do we need the vote to table it?
No, no, if you just, just table it, we don't. And I don't even wanna say June twenty-third. What I could do is I'll just, I'll, I'll talk to Danny Love or Gordon Love and I'll just ride that. I'll see how long I can carry it through, so.
Any objections from council to table it? So, uh, next on the agenda is approve the low bidder for FY twenty-four paving, manager Dave.
Okay, I had done a preliminary takeoff. It was right around three hundred and six thousand. Um, the bid came in again incredibly low. I was basing my numbers, my engineering numbers off of last year's dollar value in concrete. At one time was hovering around at and above two hundred dollars. Asphalt, cement, concrete is down, asphalt, concrete's down. But you've got a low, another, a low bid that I'm extremely pleased with. Um, that I would recommend you, that you go with, which is WNL construction. They've done WNL construction paving. They've done paving multiple times in town. I've put the bid specs in there. Um, if you got any questions on where all that engineering is coming from math comes from, let me know, but it's two hundred twenty-four thousand, nine hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty cents. We've got three hundred thousand dollar line item for that. They will be pulling that out of. Um, my recommendations obviously received all of that. Mostly a little bit.
Yep.
So I got a second. Any discussion?
Discussion. Uh, seeing as how that doesn't exceed or, or use up the total funds that we earmarked for paving this year, are there any other projects that you would have in mind that we could get, get rolling on to get done, possibly with a different vendor or just to increase the amount of paving that we can get done?
I've actually got two other streets and one of them is off of Piston. Um, that I'm gonna go look at again tomorrow. Um, they've got a lot falling in and it may be a situation where the winner, I might lose that street, so I'm gonna look at that street. Um, and I've also got the fire department. That was actually approved by this board last year. We put it off. And that, that dollar value is obviously gonna change. And hopefully it'll be a little less, but if I remember right, don't, please don't, probably around fifty thousand, so. I'll come back. It may not be that much. As a matter of fact, I know I'm wrong because it was a fifty thousand dollar budget. But let me bring it back. Um, but to answer your question, we will absolutely take a look at it after paving and see how much money, absolutely. Yes.
Okay, so we've got a, a second, so all in favor of proof of the low bidder for the paving projects, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right, so low bidder approved. Next, the donation request from THS Bam boosters. Manager Dave?
Okay, you've got a, a request, uh, whoop, THS Bam boosters, they're seventy-five to eighty. Um, and that, that falls under the fifty-one to one-fifty, which is fifty dollars to four hundred. Fifty is even more than four.
Make a motion when you get four hundred dollars from the main street.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of, uh, four hundred dollar donation request to the THS Bam boosters, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by saying nay. All right. So next manager Dave's gonna give us a update on new lead and copper regulations.
Okay, lead and copper has always been in the forefront of local governments that own and operate water distribution systems since the beginning of time. So our water quality is checked literally daily. Monthly, we do all types of reports and go back to the health department. And over the last few years, lead specifically has been at the forefront of the health department, the levels of lead. So every, so often, we actually go to homes in town and they have to give us water samples. And the way these water samples are structured, you cannot let the water flow before you take the sample. So you actually gotta go to the faucet to take the sample. We send it off. And it actually is a reflection of levels of copper or lead in the home. It's not the distribution system. It's actually in the home. However, the feds use local government tax dollars in order to communicate and force, uh, force, force levels of, um, of control, I guess is a good way to put that. So, um, one of the things that they have been looking at for the last couple of years is, is becoming extremely important and very aggressive and is the level of copper and lead on the personal side. So we are federally mandated and we have till two thousand twenty-four. And I can tell you, staff has got an incredible program, uh, which is gonna include Facebook, the website. Um, that text messaging thing we've got, Chris, what's your call?
Please.
Yeah, Vixel Communication, but, uh, we are being mandated federally to find out what type of water lines are not only on the town side, but both sides of the meter. Um, so it's going to literally demand and enforce a communication level with your constituents. And it's not if. It's not like we have a choice. Um, we are actually mandated to do it and it's a new program, so the teeth that the federal government has in it have not been created yet. But I don't wanna find out what they are. So we are going to be setting up a program. We're gonna do it in-house. There are grants out there and my, my team and I have got together and evaluated along with Thompson and living engineering firm, other engineering firm, and we feel like it's in the best interest of this locality if we do the house. So you're gonna be seeing some stuff come out on Facebook. You're gonna be seeing some stuff come out on the town's website. Again, through Vixel, through Nixle, whatever it is, the communication thing we have. And you're gonna, you're gonna see a lot of activity in the field over the next year and more, trying to collect this data. So it is, it's very serious. Uh, federal government doesn't have much. There's, there's no leeway for a high level lack of aggressiveness and there's only no tolerance there. So um, it's a lot of information that you can look up. We've put a lot of information in the packet, but we, at the same time, try to not overwhelm them all kind of, all kinds of mixtures to get to where we're at.
So let us know how we can help.
Absolutely. We, it's just gonna, it's gonna take a lot of communication from the public and it's gonna be some, some redos and there's gonna be some, um, some communication breakdown and we're gonna drop the ball and make mistakes and we're gonna, we're gonna do everything we can to do it right. And we're gonna, we're gonna absolutely define on this project that we're human. Uh, but we're gonna do everything we can to get it done right.
What about the low income people? How are they, how are they gonna afford all this, uh, if they have to change their water lines?
We don't know if that's coming down yet. We don't know how it's coming down, but we do predict that in years to come, that that will be forced on the locality. Not, not the customer. So right now, we're used to going to the meter or going to the property line, depends on the arrangements there. Um, but for example, natural gas goes all the way to the house. Matter of fact, we go to the consumer of the natural gas, which could be a fireplace. And they're gonna be looking at us to do the same thing whatsoever. I'm just giving you a heads up and you're, you're gonna see, um, a lot of communication ready to go out next week through your internet, Facebook, et cetera, from downtown. Thank you. Yep, absolutely.
The next past project update. Manager Dave?
Okay, um, I had a, I had a, a question from one of the elected officials um, about projects and what I wanted to show you in your package is that this is what we used to do back in two thousand thirteen, four, I don't know how long we did it, but this specific one came from two thousand sixteen. And I know, I know when David y'all will remember this, but it got to the point where the packets were so thick. And there comes a, there comes a time where staff, um, you've got this and, you know, you gotta earn that from every level, every level of communication I got, um, that you have, but we, we will absolutely start putting this depth of communication back in the packet if you so desire or if there's another method of our projects that we do monthly. Um, I don't know how many pages that is, that is right here, rather than with fifty, sixty, seventy pages out there. But it is absolutely in-depth of what we do basically on a, on a daily basis of what we've done, where we're going. But I can just remember, I remember, I'm not gonna say who it was, and they were like, why do you give us that every month? We don't wanna see what you're doing and the management, you just do it, go get it done. It is, but we took it out.
There is, there's some of that in the paperwork that we get.
And.
I mean, it's not to that extent, but there is some.
Okay. If there's anything, um, I'm gonna leave, I'm, uh, unless I hear, I'm just gonna leave what we've been doing in there. But staff is very capable of, of figuring out your documents.
I mean, I would say if somebody is interested in something specific, go more towards that, but that's a whole lot of work for the staff to generate that every month.
I just wanna put it after. Don't want clip art.
Some of clip art's really shocking. I liked it.
I think this makes definitely email I had sent, sent out. Uh, not, not the intent of what, uh, what I was trying to message. The, uh, the way that you gave updates on the projects and basically understand the limitation factors of the, your staff is having in regards to projects like the sidewalk or, um, like flood situation, splash pad, stuff like that is, uh, general situational awareness that I was trying to achieve.
Oh, so just like a little bullet list and just where we are on that?
Just, just to know, you know, sure.
This is why I like to see the police department get a job and what they could have. You put out the officer's picture that, yeah, I like to see that, who they hired and who left. And I've heard a lot about the police department reference to their, uh, their officers have done a great job. They've answered, they were treated. One was out of state, I'm not gonna say that one, but out of state, and he recommended that the, the police officer was doing a great job. And that's why I'd like to see, and the fire departments, if our department's having something like this out, they'd be great to see them too.
Well, you're gonna keep going there.
That's what I'm saying. You know, it's something that, you know, they've done that we like to see. And you do have that with the, uh, the water department. Uh, you've taken the trucks out to the school and delivered all these trucks, fire trucks, dump trucks. So the future of, of these people are seeing this and they, they're interested. And that might be bringing jobs into the town. There's some, they would like to pay them what, hire, get hired in the town when I'm a graduate of high school. But I think that was, but I don't know about these flowers and stuff, but you know, I like the, I like the little words from each department.
And that's what we're getting now, right? And that's what we're getting now, right?
Uh, yeah, we got it now, because I didn't have it last time.
Yeah, we have it every time.
Do we have to argue?
We can, no, I don't know.
So now you got, yeah. Alright, so next on the agenda is to approve, supposed to approve the special exemption permit request for Airbnb at 999 Riverside Drive. We have removed the chief. We have removed the A.
Okay.
Six letters, five came back, so five people, six got the letter. One problem, got two little machines.
There's nothing.
Nobody else call, person smoking on once?
Nobody against it, except Miss Morgan came. She got straightened out.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll make a mention.
Give a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the special exemption permit request for Airbnb at 999 Riverside Drive, stays up by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, stays up by saying nay?
Hey, Sue.
Alright, so permit request approved. Next, manager day is going to give us some economic impact that we've done some discussion.
Okay, I had an incredible question brought, brought up, and historically, we've tried to target it. But it's how to measure events that we have in town. Like, I would absolutely love to know the, the increase in revenue over the last three days at Back to the Drag, and you know, what's the additional ROI that went into that project and all the events that we have around town? I can give you an example. This was back during the Aqua Park early days, but I can remember Wendy's and Hudson, it was Wendy's, some of those running out of food. Just call it an Aqua Park. They had 200 kids there. It was 200 people there. We had 200 life vests. We haven't anymore. So, I mean, it was, it was a big hit. But what we can do, if we look at meal tax the next month, and you see it, but to actually say, we should give you like a, I don't want to put in a struggle here. Help me out a little bit. That's a good way to measure it.
Auctions, see if that, you know, better. What do you say?
Auctions.
Yes. So we could look at, say, like the month of May's, compare it to the month of June's, see if there's fluctuations, should be increases, I would think. If you always like me to do that, I can have it for next month.
And we can either communicate with, like, I'm just going to use an example, but like Marathon. I know the chief's got a good relationship with Marathon, and we're right in the middle of that. And just go onto them and saying, look, we've got a question, and seeing what it did. And so we do have personal relationships with a number of businesses in town that we know should have solved by increase. And I hope some of them have solved decrease, but we can do that. We can, we can, we can do that.
Because I think if we start seeing some numbers like that, it will, you know, help educate us when we go forward with other events.
Okay, so we will, we will try to have that. Next, when will the, when will the meal tax report? And I know it's monthly, but when will that show, Back to the Drag?
That one will be due July the 20th.
Okay.
So I actually wouldn't have it for two months.
So for all.
Fair enough. The, the communication of one on one set business, though, could happen.
I was saying, can we, can we generate like a survey to sit out to some of the businesses?
Absolutely, yeah.
If they have prior year, or well.
I already talked to Marathon just briefly, to a couple of them, and they, they said they were sworn by weekend. Didn't have any problems, except there was a couple people who came in and didn't know that they couldn't open their gear on the parking lot. But, you know, they pointed it out real quick, and they avoided that. But they had a big day, is what they told me.
So, we'll move to the drug town screening requirement discussion.
Okay, as each of you know, we, we have really struggled this year finding not only full-time positions, but part-time positions. So we are, we actually do have two meetings right now. So we had one for the longest time, and we were able to hire, and then, but we've had a number that have come in, and they have failed drug tests due to what the world recognizes today is mild something, which is marijuana falls under that. So I've had a couple of different conversations with VML, who is our insurance company, and what they're seeing across the Commonwealth is a lot of localities are completely dropping their pre-deployment. They're changing their guidelines, and unfortunately, marijuana, you can use marijuana, and it stays in your system for a long time. But to give you an example, you can use marijuana and two days later go to work and be fine. And outwork, I mean, work right with the best of them, but unfortunately, it shows up on the drug test for X number of deaths. So the law, I'm not going to say allow marijuana anymore, but it's making me step outside and normal, and VML is actually standing behind it. So just to let you know, what we are going to try to do is I'm still a little too old school to recognize that in full-time employment, and to put somebody behind a $200,000 vehicle or drive period is beyond my mind to try to consume with the understanding of alcohol, I mean, marijuana being in the background. So we are going to be looking at part-time, specifically right now, grass cutting, that will not be driving vehicles at all, nor operating machinery, with the understanding that while they're here, they will be utilizing weedage. But we will be still doing pre-drug testing, and, but we will be also, as VML said, using reasonable suspicion and using our eyes a little better, but we will be a little lenient on marijuana.
I think our insurance agency is okay with it, but, yeah.
I can speak from this from a HR perspective as well. I've got a colleague that was in Washington, I think whenever they legalized that, he worked for a paper company. And he said that they track their accident rate and all that whenever they transitioned to that. And they said they saw minimal change. They said it, like, negligent. So, you know, that's, in my opinion, that it's...
We're just kidding. I just never found, you know, I'm 54, I'm never found, I'm not happy with that.
The experience I had with officer recruiting for the Air Force, and their policy grew much more lenient from the time when I was at that until the time I went back and told them. How frequently, I guess, do you drug test? Is it on reasonable suspicion?
It can be, but we ran DOT testing, so we're going to pop up every time. We don't, we don't let you know.
Once a month? Okay. And the way that they influenced and mitigated drug abuse.
Thank you.
Thanks. Was basically, I guess, I think they have some, they've, they, at this point further, you know, here's their policy, no more use, and they were subject to testing after that, you know, full time in the body. So I think it could be a good, good way to get your workers' language taken.
Yep. Agreed. I'm just struggling with the big time. Anyway, I don't have much trouble here. Okay, so next miscellaneous, I didn't see anything. Anybody sign in to speak?
No.
No?
Yeah, the Miss Morgan.
Yeah, Miss Morgan. So next session is council comment.
Okay, I do.
You got the floor? Hi, Fire Department Chief, Tom. Is there anything on the, where all the trucks are parked, there's a film on the ceiling? It's not, not too good. Is there any way you can clean that, or any way that can be cleaned? It's like when you start your trucks up and all that smoke hits the ceiling, it turns black.
Most of that's from the heat.
The heat?
Yeah, it's, yes, sir. It's discolored, the ceiling. Is that what you're talking about?
We'll take a look at it, see if it can get out. Yeah.
It's mostly from the heaters.
That's from the heaters?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it. We'll see if we can get it out.
What's our procedure when we shut down main street to notify the businesses like during the weekday?
We advertise that whoever is shutting down the street, like, for example, the past one day does our events. So we, we, they push to try to communicate very good.
Because I've told you, some of the businesses weren't notified on Friday. Need to make sure they're aware.
Sure. We'll be talking about the presence.
Yeah, we just got to do the child communication. We don't have to worry about anything. We don't do that.
Wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, we will absolutely improve our communication.
Send certified letter?
Or so much, but I think you just get a notice to somebody. Certified, you have to pay for that, writing three or four bucks a pop, it's unnecessary.
Thank you.
Yes, buddy.
Thank you, sorry, false inflation.
You have to have the secretaries do yours.
We will improve our communication and see, you know, it was my intent. I was going to tell you, I was going to put a map on, on, on the computer, and one thing that colleagues got lost in the world, but we will improve our communication.
You had something to say?
Yep.
Yeah, I got it. When you, when I, one day, someday, can you bring the council, and I'll always award you candy.
No one's saying you can't come down there?
No, he's talking about in the resolution, it just mentions the mayor. He wants to say mayor and town council.
That's my fault too. We'll fix that. I'll fix that too.
That's why, you know, it's what I'm saying.
I don't write. We will absolutely. It's like, it's a, it's a historic worldwide practice that the mayor just always gets that thunder from every locality in the world. It's not just, but we can fix it.
Why do you say it?
We can fix it to where each one of you are recognized. It's not a problem.
Only, I don't want to be good.
You just wanted to say town council.
Yes, town council, mayor, town council, my fault, you know.
We'll do it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.